Welcome out to our city council work meeting this evening. I apologize for the slight delay, but I needed to have a discussion with our city manager. So anyway, with that, I would like to declare this meeting in session and I'm looking for any return or reports by our city council members as far as their assignments. Does anybody have anything they'd like to report back to one another?
You met with the youth council last night, so I don't know how that went, but thank you for doing that. The communities that CARE is moving forward and they're getting ready to separate into the two boards for Northridge and Leighton High.
Sweet.
And so we'll have more information on that coming up. And then just attending the chamber legislation meetings and thank goodness tomorrow night at midnight it's over with.
And along those lines, I do want to say thank you for participating in that along with Councilman Bloxham and Morris for their dedication there as far as the league as well. So anyway, I'm sure they might have some reports as well. So does anybody else want to report on their duties?
I'll just report that the Rampe Commission is in full swing and getting their decisions made and they'll be here shortly. One of them is kind of on tonight's, but not officially yet.
Oh, good. Thanks for attending those meetings and being there for our representation. Anyone else? Okay, very good then.
Councilman Morris and I have obviously been involved in this. We just are always talking with Gary and with the members of our member delegation. I think we're in a good spot. It's hard to know where these bills are. They're going back and forth and but I haven't seen any really terrible news yet. Gary keeps them on the straight and narrow. And so I think my guess, my understanding was that we would have more of a share with the council once we, you know, the session ends and we know exactly what it is. If there's anything that we feel, you know, would need the other members of the councils' help and support, we'd for sure reach out to you to do that. The one we reached out today was a permitting amendment. It was a bill that was passed by the Senate that would basically create a lot of roadblocks and mandates on the city in terms of its permitting for events, which is difficult because every permit, and I'm sure Dave knows this from his time there, is going to be its own monster, right? And having the state tell us that we have to follow these, you know, one size fits all rules doesn't make a lot of sense, especially since Leighton has a lot of events in the regular, you know, non-COVID years. And having that kind of burden on us is just, I'm not really sure what the bill's trying to accomplish. So I know that the Councilman Morris sent some correspondence to our legislative delegation. I did as well. I know Steve Garside did and I think, I'm sure that the city attorney did as well. And so I haven't seen that come up, Gary. I've been waiting for it, but I don't think it's, hasn't come up yet. So I've had good feedback from the representatives that I talked to that they are not supporting of it, so that's good. So it's just kind of how the sausage gets made on the Hill and appreciate Councilman Morris helping out in the process and I'm sure he has some things he wants to add as well.
Just a couple. I believe that HB 82, the ADU bill, is heading to the governor. So we're going to have to look at that and as far as our code goes, as far as the ordinance for accessory dwelling units. But it was negotiated. HB 98, the one that we were talking about that Dave has been super interested in with the design elements and the building permits, still circled.
Still up in the air, right?
Yeah, so and this guy behind me, Gary Crane, has been, he's negotiated on behalf of the entire state, the League of Cities and Towns for the entire state, to work with Representative Ray, to come up with a great compromise so that the league's been neutral. And so kudos to Gary to, he just kind of made the, hey, why don't you look at the law and see where it is right now? And that was the part of the compromise was it's already there in the law that, you know, if we're not doing our due diligence with the building permits and those reviews, then yeah, there ought to be, okay. But the cities that aren't doing that, it's tough to be punished for what other cities aren't doing, but I think we're in a good spot there and we'll see what happens with that one. And again, just kudos to Gary and his team. They're, they are respected up on the Hill and it's good. And this council and Leighton City is also well-respected as far as how we do things and.
Our whole city is. I mean, they're basically.
Yeah, the whole Leighton city, so it's good.
The whole leadership down there.
Yeah, so.
But you can see by what you just explained, Councilman Morris, why when we see that they have 1,000-plus bills, why 90% of them are going back and correcting the ones that got passed. I mean, it isn't like there's new bills. It's a matter of correcting what's already been done. So yeah, Gary, I would not want your job.
Madam Mayor, just to answer, Councilman Day mentioned the SHB 82, I believe the league was neutral on that, on the bill that was actually signed.
That's the accessory building?
Right, so that was, the league was, you know, very opposed to it, but through Gary's negotiation and some of the discussions with other stakeholders, the league got to a point where it was neutral. And that's the one that's going to the governor's desk. So that's just how it ended up and so it, as just as an answer to you, Councilman Day.
Well, I think there's some good things that come out of some modifications there myself, but tomorrow's last day, correct?
Yes.
Kind of.
So the chamber was very good about remaining neutral on that as well as the Northern Association of Chambers. They've all remained neutral on that particular bill as well. So anyway, yeah, it's been a lively session, so like you say, 24, less than 24 hours to go. Councilman Thomas.
I say this to pass it on. Okay, I ran into two people from the Hill and they were having lunch and they happened to be by me. No, no, the other way around. Anyway, they made one comment, which I think I need to pass it on. They said, they said to me personally, because I don't know as much as what you guys are doing, but they said, you don't know what you have in the city on the Hill. Now, and they weren't talking about themselves, they're both from Leighton, but they were talking about Gary, not his coordination, but they were talking about his mentality. But he says, you really don't know what you have. And then they alluded on the things which he does and, you know, I mean, I know he goes down there and I thought he was just messing around half the time, but evidently he's doing a lot of good work. And I just want to pass it on. I'm not, that doesn't come from me to a lawyer, that came from developers to a lawyer, which is even. But anyway, kudos. I mean, there's a lot of things and I hear when you guys talk how things are happening that we get taken care of that normally we wouldn't, so. Kudos, old man.
Okay, any other reports? Well, that sounds like a best segue into our training moment brought to you by the one and only Mr. Gary Crane. Mr. Capitol Hill, it sounds like.
We'll see if he can walk if his head's so big now from all the compliments.
Thank you very much, members of the council, also.
See you later.
Hey, you can't speak over there, we can't catch you on the mic, so.
Let me just put this in. Subject for tonight.
Input D.
What is it? Subject? Make sure everyone knows. I was just like a lawyer.
It's okay, usually I have someone else do it for you.
Okay, so. I guess I turned it off and didn't know I turned it off, so.
Well, thank you very much for the opportunity and I thank each one of you for the opportunity of working with them on the Hill because right now we have about a strong contingency on the Hill. It's not hard to do well when you've got people like the President of the Senate and the Speaker of the House to deal with. I mean, that's not, you guys give me a hard job and I probably wouldn't be able to do it, but do it, give me an easy job and we can do it. But Leighton City is well-respected. Alex, one of the finest city managers in the state and our Public Works Department, our CD Director, they're all very, very well-respected. When I needed an opinion on building inspection, I go to Paul Bauer, to the CD Department, and everybody respects the CD Department and everybody knows who Chad is and everybody knows who Paul is and so that really helps. And then today, all I had to do was do a text to Clint and to Zach and next thing I knew, everybody on the floor had been contacted regarding the bill that was up that we wanted the permit bill. And thank you also, Don, for all the work that you do with the Chamber of Commerce. I just have to say thank you for that because it's magnificent what you and the mayor do. Both of you attend those meetings, don't you, in the mornings? And thank you for keeping up on that. I don't know what I'd have to do if I had another meeting to attend, so. And then I get feedback from you. That's the way that this works and I appreciate that very much. And then Dave, he sits in restaurants and converses with developers, which is probably one of the best sources of information that we could possibly look to, so.
I know where they eat.
I appreciated Dave, the other day he came into my office and just sat and listened to a part of one of the meetings and maybe, I don't know, that he understood it any better than I did when we both got done. It was a Zoom meeting with the league group talking about different aspects of bills. So I don't follow them all, but I just appreciate very much the opportunity. And Tom, thank you because of your expertise and the things that you add. I know you don't like the Hill very much and not very many people do, but we appreciate your letting me go up there to do what we do.
It's kind of like you have fun.
Yeah.
When he does talk, people listen.
Everybody listens. You're right. And he's our secret weapon. If we ever really truly need somebody to go up and beat up on him, we'll take Tom up there with us, so. So tonight I decided maybe just take a couple of minutes and talk about something that gets cities into more trouble than just about anything that we do. And it's a thing called exactions. And some of you might know what exactions are. Developers call them extractions or extortions or they have various other names for them, but we call them, when they're done right, exactions, which means the city expects something from a developer when they come in in order to provide the services, in order to provide the infrastructure and in order to provide the things that the city otherwise must come up with. The roads, the streets, those types of things. And those are all requirements of development and requirements of development are known as exactions. That's what they're known as. Also, money that we require as a result of a developer developing is called an exaction. So the impact fees we charge is called an exaction as well. A long time ago, the courts, the Supreme Court of the United States, determined that cities could exact things from developers. When you come into the city, you ought to pay your own way. At the same time, the Supreme Court set in place rules for what we exact from a developer or what we take from a developer. For example, if I have an individual come in and he wants to develop a parcel of property and the city says, listen, you know, we want gold-plated pipe, we want pipe that is so big that it'll serve us all at the northeast corner of the city and we want a park and we want, and they go on and on and on. What the city has to determine, there's a standard, and the standard is whatever we ask for in exactions has to be reasonably related to a governmental purpose. So it has to be something like a road or the courts have actually said aesthetics is one, is a governmental purpose, to have lawns, to have park strips. Those types of things are governmental purposes, okay? So it has to be related to a governmental purpose and then it has to be roughly proportional to, whatever we ask for has to be roughly proportional to whatever the impact that the developer is causing is. So if we ask for way more than what the impact is, it's an excessive exaction and we can go to court and we can lose horribly as a result of that. At the same time, you don't want to ask for much less than what you actually need in order to support this development. So I'm going to just play a really brief, it's like one and a half minutes. This is the keynote case. This is the key case that everybody looks to when they talk about exactions. There are a number of others. We've got some in Utah and I can quickly just tell you about a couple of those. But this is the case that actually turned the corner in determining what is a fair exaction and what is not. And so with your permission, I'll go ahead and just play it here. If I can get it started. Let's see. Thanks, Steve.
The city of Tigard, Oregon faced two problems. Motor vehicle traffic clogged its central business district. Meanwhile, as more buildings arose with their impervious concrete surfaces, rainwater runoff caused flooding. In order to reduce automobile traffic, the city planned sidewalks and bike paths. To address the flooding, the city required businesses to maintain at least 15% of their parcels as open space. The city also restricted development within the floodplain, preserving it as a greenway. Florence Dolan owned a store within the floodplain. Dolan wanted to double the size of her store and to pave her gravel parking lot. The city granted Dolan a building permit, subject to two conditions. It demanded that she deed all her land lying within the floodplain to the city to be used for its greenway and storm drainage system. The city also demanded an additional strip of land for a walkway and bicycle path to alleviate the additional traffic caused by the larger store. Altogether, the city demanded about 10% of her lot in exchange for her building permit. Dolan appealed these dedication requirements to the Land Use Board of Appeals. The board upheld both requirements. The Oregon Court of Appeals affirmed the board's decision, as did the Oregon Supreme Court. Dolan then sought United States Supreme Court review.
So Dolan ended up in prevailing at the Supreme Court. And she prevailed on two issues. The court said, why do you need to own her property in the floodplain? Could you not just have a floodplain easement? Is there something less excessive that you could do? And the answer was, yeah, to own the property was excessive. The bicycle path, what you've got to do is you've got to ask, what relationship does a bicycle path have to the impact that Dolan's property was causing on, the impact that her property was causing? And the answer was very, very little. If you count the number of people that come to her store in comparison to the number of people that you're building that bicycle track for, it's very, very, there's a great, great amount of difference. Let me tell you about an actual case, Snyder Golf Course case, Judge Sam of the federal District Court, when he was on the bench. What had happened is 13th East is where the Snyder Golf Course is and the Snyder Golf Course wanted to add nine new holes to their golf course. They already had a nine-hole golf course. And I'm going to ask you whether you think this is excessive or not, but the city of Sandy, actually, it is in the city of Sandy, yeah, the city of Sandy actually had a master plan that showed 13th East as being 100 feet wide. Well, currently, 13th East was only about 50 or 60 feet wide. And so when Snyder Golf Course came in and said, we're going to add nine additional holes, Sandy said, we need 13 feet of roadway in addition to what you've already got, what we've already got there. And we're going to get 13 feet from you, Snyder Golf Course. And then a few days later, is that excessive, do you think? Maybe?
Maybe.
Maybe, okay, maybe, all right? If you count the number of cars that come off 13th East and the number that go into Snyder's Golf Course in comparison to the total number of cars that come down 13th East, you're probably going to come out very small and that's exactly what the judge did. And it was a very small fraction of that 13 feet really should have been dedicated by Snyder Golf Course. Here's what else happened. It was even worse than that. Sandy said, well, this is a kind of a state roadway and the future of that roadway is supposed to be 100 feet, so we're looking at the fact that really what we want is we want the full extent of our master plan. And so they asked for 18, I think it was 18 to 20 feet is what they asked for. So not only were they asking for the 13 feet, which would have been, you know, the equivalent of roughly a half street in front of Snyder Golf Course, but then they increased it because there was a requirement in their general plan for a wider street. Is a requirement in your general plan adequate enough to be able to ask a developer to dedicate everything that your general plan requires? That's an interesting thought, isn't it?
Which brings up a question, so, and maybe that's what you're leading to. So where would the point become where the city would need to purchase that property instead of just asking for it?
Excellent question. Excellent question. So what the court did was it analyzed the amount of traffic on the street and said that only 2% of the traffic was actually generated by Snyder Golf Course on any given day, maybe it was less than 2%, it was 0.2%, I think is what it was, a very small amount. And so what they indicated was, city, you can either take money or you can have them build 0.2%, 0.2% of that, of those, of that 20 feet, but you can't ask them to build a full 20 feet because your master plan alone is not enough of a basis. I'll give you another situation that will answer your question, Tom. As we build the parkway, we put in a concrete fence, right? A concrete wall.
Area.
Okay. Can we ask every developer that comes in along the parkway to build a portion of that wall, that concrete wall?
Every developer?
Comes in along the parkway?
Sure.
Yeah, we did.
I don't know because it could fall under aesthetics.
Okay, so you've got a governmental purpose, right? So that leg of the test is met. But is what you're asking this developer for roughly proportional to the impact that this developer is causing? Is the construction of an eight-foot wall at the back of these lots roughly proportional to the 25 homes, the demand that the 25 homes will have for privacy, for whatever else? What do you think? What, if they were just in a plain subdivision, what would you require?
I'd say no.
Okay, good, good answer. Thank you. So what the city has done is we've gone in and we've said, we do require everybody to build a fence, right?
Right.
And so we've said, we would require you to build a fence, a vinyl fence or a chain link fence, whatever the allowable fences are. So we will take that amount of money and the city will add the additional cost so that we can actually achieve the construction of the wall. Why? Because if you take a look at what that wall is built for, it's not just built for that subdivision. Maybe the vinyl fence would be, but the wall is built for how many people that come through Syracuse, from Syracuse to Leighton every day? And so the city, the city has tried, and so the city is going to actually put a toll booth right up there at the corner of Leighton Parkway and try and collect fees from Syracuse residents as they come. Don't, that's, anyway, all right. Don't want to start a rumor.
Yeah.
So, so do you see how exactions work? And you're the ones that arbitrate that. You're the ones that make that determination. Exactions can be demanded by ordinance. The fencing ordinance does require a fence in everybody's yard, but it doesn't require a wall. You made that decision. You made the decision that the city would pay the extra for something that was excessive or more than what this development required. You can also be excessive in just the way that you grant a permit. So a conditional use permit, for example, if a person wanted to add a drive-through to their restaurant, didn't have a drive-through there before, and all of a sudden you say, okay, now we're going to require everything we can possibly require in the commercial zone. We want 15% landscaping, we want lighting, we want this, that and the other thing. Is that proportional to the application of that person to build a drive-through? That's what you've got to ask in that particular application situation. Can you go back and request everything now? Those are the types of decisions that'll either cost you money or you're going to be okay on, depending on how you, how you make those decisions. So Tigard is the case, actually Dolan, if you remember Dolan, and remember the bicycle path. And hopefully that gives you a little bit of guidance on probably one of the most important issues you deal with, which is the exaction issue.
Not enough guidance, yeah, Gary.
Any other questions?
Yeah, I've got two, just information. So you've got an existing bill, an existing commercial business, say, they want to expand, they want to reconfigure, so how do you come about bringing up what you can exact and what the limit would be then?
Okay, so what you would do is you'd do an analysis, right? Because whatever you exact from them has to be roughly proportional to the impact that they're causing. So something like, if they've got a drive-through now and they didn't have a drive-through there before, can you require, for example, fencing now between the yard? Maybe it was an old use that didn't have fencing. Can you now require the fencing between the yard behind them and?
Probably.
Sure. Check that one off, right? Because it has to do with the light, you know, that you're, okay. And what about the visual impact of a drive-through? Can you require a little more landscaping in the front to address the visual impact of the landscaping, do you think?
Possibly.
Possibly.
But let's say they didn't have any landscaping out front before.
Okay, no landscaping out front before?
Yeah, what if it's, what if they?
It's just right to the curb, pegged to the curb.
There wasn't those conditions prior to.
Okay.
In other words, it was an existing building, like you said.
And now they're coming.
Now we've updated our plan, now we've got more requirements.
You tell me, do you need that landscaping for the driveway now that is there with cars lined up and coming through? Do you need that landscaping?
Well, let's say there's a drive-through. They just want to rebuild their building.
Okay. Rebuilding the building might be a different scenario altogether, but remodeling the building? Could you require landscaping and everything if all they're going to do is a remodel and maybe adding another five feet to the side of the building? Is that roughly proportional to the impact they're causing? Almost no change at all, right?
Right.
You get a sense for that as you look at it. You go, holy cow, that's a little bit excessive.
But if they were going to tear it down and build a whole new building, you'd start from scratch again.
You'd start from scratch. Yeah, great question. You'd start from scratch.
So what about our PRUDs? Because in the development agreements with those, I think a lot of times we maybe go like requiring trails and that for that specific subdivision, you may have a handful of people that walk on that trail.
Uh huh.
I'm thinking of the destination one that's going to continue, that's just starting to continue the Case Creek, and if I'm not mistaken, he's responsible for putting in a trail. But that'll be utilized by everybody that lives out west versus just those people in that Hill Farm subdivision, so. But it's probably in a development agreement because that's probably a PRUD. So can you get away with more in a development agreement than you could just normally?
So that's another question altogether. And that's a good question. The answer to that question is that where you have a something-for-something exchange, you can ask for a little more. When you have an annexation, you can ask for just about anything on an annexation. But the idea is a development agreement really has to be more than just an agreement that says you can come in and build according to the code. The presumption is a development agreement says you can come in and build according to the code, but you can also have additional density. And for that additional density, you're going to build trail, a trail system through here or have more open space or cluster over here, those types of things. So yes, those are exceptions to what we've been talking about, which is the exaction requirement. But if they become excessive, they're still going to be questioned. If they're extortion, they're going to be questioned.
So I'm guessing that as since Dolan, 1994, I think I saw, you have a pretty good idea of what, through all the history of all, any other city trying exactions, seeing them go too far, seeing them not go far enough, what's required and what would pass muster reasonableness-wise and what would not. It's not like you have to invent the wheel every time an development comes in because it's an objective test, I'm guessing. So you mentioned that a lot of times when we're given council trainings or, you know, general plan is your So you mentioned that, that a lot of times when we're given council trainings or, you know, general plan is your guidance, right? But in the scenario you mentioned with Sandy, their general plan was their guidance, but their general plan was, was not in, in alliance with what the exaction reasonable standard was.
Right.
So.
They can still build that wider road, right?
Yeah. But they just can't require it from the, from, as a, as a, as a condition on the exactment.
Very good. That's exactly right, Zach. Exactly right, so.
So Gary, how would, how would eminent domain, how does that relate to this as well? I mean?
Good question. Eminent domain is us forcing the purchase of something that we would normally exact and maybe don't have the right to exact. So where we require a little bit broader width, we can require that that property owner sell that to us through the eminent domain process. And that's the way government, I used to have a professor that used to say this, say this, if government wants your property, they should pay for it. And so if we want their property, we should pay for it. The only exception to that is where they're causing an impact. We can reasonably require that they compensate for that impact, that they, the development community compensate for the impact that they're causing. Does that help at all? A little bit? Yeah, eminent domain is the way we force the purchase of property, that we have a responsibility to purchase.
So back to my second question. Relates a little bit to that. Are parks eligible for eminent domain or not?
Parks?
Yeah.
Not anymore. As of about four years ago, I think. They took parks out of the list of things that were public purposes.
So, so for instance, southwest part of our town, we're going to need another park sometime. So what? I can see, like Dawn asked, on the PRUD, I can see how we'd have a lot more negotiations on getting a park. What if a developer just came in and said, no, I just want to do a regular subdivision, nothing else? How, how, or what would be the points of exaction to get a park then, if any?
The mechanism for getting a park? Eminent domain or?
But you say eminent domain doesn't count anymore.
Eminent domain does, when you say doesn't count anymore.
Well, you just said that you couldn't use eminent domain for a park.
Oh, yeah, that's, 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 I'm sorry, you're right. I must have fallen too hard on my head. But yeah, you're right. You can't, you just have to wait until there's an opportunity to buy, purchase a parcel of property, unfortunately. Sorry about that.
Well, don't we require space?
Yes.
Like in a subdivision?
Yeah, and I think what Tom was talking about is where they decide not to do a PRUD.
Say I had 20 acres, the city wanted to park there, but I said, I don't need a PRUD, I just want to do a RS subdivision.
Oh.
R110, nothing extravagant, not, not asking for any considerations. Then it would be difficult for the city to get that park without paying for it.
So then we'd have to negotiate, arms length, we'd have to negotiate. And we would have to use impact fees essentially to buy that park, property, whatever it costs. If we really want it that bad, so. Thank you.
Interesting, Gary. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hey, stay close when we go through these things.
So Gary, just one last comment. So like the water exactions that we do, that's, that's obviously a public benefit.
Yep.
So, so no problem with things like that at all?
And it also, it also, there's a, there's a proportional share that Steve very carefully figures out. Of how much water will that particular property use and that's all we can exact. We can't. I know there's one jurisdiction that was just nailed for essentially requiring all the shares of water that are on that property because we don't want to lose them from the city. We don't want to lose them. So, so you have seven shares on there, bring them all in.
But that's where the calculation of hard services and all of that comes in to calculate that, right?
That's the roughly proportional test that Steve does.
Okay.
And he does a great job on it, so thank you.
That was very educational and well worth the discussion. So obviously anytime you guys have any questions, you know who to go to. All right, we'll continue on with our meeting to item number three, which is a bid award. And Mr. Dave Price will go through those details for us.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. This evening I have the pleasure to review with you the Andy Adams Park Tennis Court renovation project. This park is at 1713 East, 1000 North. These two tennis courts are believed to be the oldest tennis courts in Leighton City. They were originally acquired from East Leighton City. And they were constructed using slab pour technique, which is similar to the way that you would construct the driveway. And so there, there was no technology at that time to hold the concrete together. That makes, makes a huge difference in the way we manage and, and use tennis courts now. The existing courts, the subsurface is failing and flaking off in large slabs. If this was simply a problem with the acrylic finish on the concrete, we would resurface the courts and move forward. But because the concrete subsurface is failing, we cannot cost effectively repair these. And so that's why we've asked you to consider completely demolishing them and rebuilding them.
Could I just ask a question about that?
Sure.
So is it, is it just the old acrylic finish or the new acrylic finish is the same? Or is it different technology now to cover the concrete? Because I imagine it's from the expanding then contracting of the concrete surface what causes that or what?
If I understand correctly, the, the acrylic surface is just a very small coating on top. And that can be reapplied multiple times as long as the concrete base is solid. In this case, it's the concrete base that's failing.
Not the coating as much.
Not the coating.
So the technology and the way the concrete is poured now is what you're saying is?
Has changed.
Is what's changed.
Yeah. And as we had the professionals come out to look at this court, they analyzed it and they said that probably 20 years ago. Someone came in and on top of the existing concrete to try to smooth it out, they added about an inch and a half layer of new concrete. And at that seam is where we're seeing these large slabs come off. And because they come off in, in actual, you know, kind of foot-sized pieces. If you're playing tennis and you move across that surface and try to stop suddenly, that, you know, that piece of concrete can give way. And so that's why we closed this court about a year, year and a half ago. I mean, it was just unsafe to play in or to play on.
So things have changed enough that if you get a good concrete and a good layer, you're, you should be good?
Yeah.
Okay.
And, and you can resurface that top layer, the acrylic surface many times. And so we sent this project or we designed it and sent it out to bid. And as you know, because we worked with you to come up with this plan, we're using the same footprint for the design of the new complex. And we're going to, or we're proposing to put in one tennis court that is also striped for pickleball. And then to have two dedicated pickleball courts. We believe that this much more meets the needs of, of today's clientele. Tennis is moving down and pickleball is moving up in popularity. And so these neighborhood parks are places where people can walk to, to, to play both of these amenities. We think that's a real good solution. We did send this out to bid in a public manner. There are only two contractors in the state of Utah that are certified to do pickleball and tennis post-tension courts. And that's the technology that we'll talk about in a sec. The post-tension court is, well, I have a drawing if, if you don't mind, all right there. It, on top of a subgrade, they pour the concrete with cables laced throughout the concrete. And as the concrete cures, they tighten the pressure from the sides of the court. And they basically just squeeze that concrete and so that there's no cracks that form or fewer cracks, minor cracks. It allows them to pour a much larger pad of concrete without any seams at all. And so if you compare courts of this age of, of Andy Adams Park, you'll see that there are cold joints and expansion joints throughout the tennis court. Whereas the new technology allows us to pour this entire slab of concrete without any joints at all. And so it's a much more uniform surface.
And heat of summer, cold of winter stays crack-free?
Yeah, because of.
Because of cables?
Yeah, through that 30 to 45 day period, they just continually put pressure on that concrete. And it, it makes quite a bit of a difference. So I apologize, let me get back to where we were. This, this complex also includes benches and shade structures. We will be removing all of the existing concrete and fencing and, and coming in with completely new concrete fencing, court amenities, things like that. It also includes a new entrance that is handicap accessible. So that people in wheelchairs or with physical disabilities can get into these courts and still use them. When we received the bids back from the two companies that put in the bid, the lowest bid was $200,388. And you can see their breakdown there. The next highest Wasatch West contracting was $279,383.61. So these were a little above what we had budgeted. In fact, we had checked with these contractors just in November of the, the prior two months before. And they told us that they felt the budget of $150,000 was adequate for this project. We were very surprised when the number came in where it is. We believe that some of the reasons for these high costs are, number one, that there is just too much work. And a limited number of contractors that can do this type of work right now. Secondly, if the contractors have a lot of work to choose from, they typically do not want to do remodels. As much as just quick new installation. Because there's unseen circumstances entailed with remodels. But we're very glad to have the bids from both of these companies. They are both certified and Parkin has come in with the low number. If you choose to approve this resolution this evening, you are also acknowledging that we will have to do a budget amendment. For this year in the amount of $55,088. And thankfully, the city has sufficient funds, either in the general fund balance or in the ramp fund, to cover that amendment. That will come to you later in the year when Tracy brings the package of amendments to you.
Dave, can you maybe help me understand the, the general conditions portion of the bid? Where Parkin Tennis Courts doesn't have anything and General and Wasatch West has $42,000? What, what is that?
When we put this bid out to, or when we put this project out to bid, we did not include a general conditions because we felt that this was a fairly simple project. And those small amounts that are typically written into general conditions could be just included in the project itself.
Maybe, I, I don't know what general conditions.
General conditions would be permitting, swept, you know, conditions, I think that's right. Conditions that are imposed on the contractor to do business in the city, also to set up the project. There are certain costs that are associated with that as well. And so Wasatch West just chose to write in at the bottom of their bid that they were charging that amount of money, $42,000 as general conditions.
To do business with the city?
Yes, and to, to start up this project and to, to let it go forward.
That's interesting.
Projects, we typically always include that, but this, this one came as a surprise.
Typically see a contractor come back with zero?
On this size of a project, yes.
Because you said you weren't requiring that, it wasn't in the bid. So is this, okay.
Chapel, Chapel Street Pickleball Course, we didn't, we didn't have a large general conditions written in.
Okay.
So Dave, it talks about the $4,700 for internal landscape repairs. What needs to be repaired?
We will be taking out all of those plants around the entire fence line. And our crews will do that. When they complete the project, we'll go back in and do some minor repairs and put in landscaping for that complex.
And if this bid's approved, when do they think they'll start or could start?
So they are looking at a start date of April. And they have 90 days to complete the, the project.
That's just their portion, not the city portion that you'd have your guys go in and landscape?
The landscaping and things that could go on after that. I'm sorry, I misspoke. The, the start day would be the first of May or the first part of May for the construction, then 90 days after that.
Okay, any other questions?
Dave, will it still be lit?
Yes, we are continuing to use the existing lights.
Elevation. They're just tearing out the concrete and their replacement.
Yeah.
Basically, I mean.
They'll tear out the concrete and the little bit of subbase so they can put in a new subbase, compact it and then build the new.
Everything will remain, you know, I say similar in size, area, height, all that.
Yeah, the only, the only functional change will be the entrance to the complex.
It'll change to the other side.
Right. Okay.
Any other questions?
So I guess the last question would just be where that funding gap comes from.
Yes.
In the future.
Yeah, and when we can talk about that in the future, like I say, we fortunately have two options that we can choose from. While I have you, Mayor, if there, if it's okay, I'd like to update you on a couple of things that have come up. Number one, today because of the governor's move to move Davis County from high to low. We are, we send out email notifications to our basketball teams and players. And we are staying right with the state and county health department requirements, but they are relaxing the social distancing rule. And so we are able to allow more spectators into our young people's basketball games, to our youth basketball games. And I think for the last week or so of our, our season and the tournament, that's going to be a real positive thing for our parents.
When you say relax, what does that mean?
That means that right now we are only letting one spectator in per child.
Yeah.
We are, we, there are no constraints.
Okay, so now it's just like it was.
Yeah, we are, we sent out in the email, we said we're recommending two spectators. But if someone came with three or four, we would certainly let them in.
Providing they all have their masks on.
Yeah, all those, all those requirements are still in place. And then just again, quickly, Harmony Place Park, we finished the design work and that is out to bid right now. And so we hope to have those bid numbers back by the end of the month and, and hope to bring that to you for a resolution at that time. Also, we are finishing up the pickleball complex at this time. And we hope to have that out to bid next week. And so that will also, we will have a resolution towards the first of next month to, to put this into place. So we're, we're.
Moving along.
Moving forward.
Yeah, thank you. These were, I know, very discussed items earlier on. And we appreciate you taking action on them and moving forward because I think we're all excited to kind of see these things come to fruition. So thank you for your attention on it.
Sorry, Mayor.
That's okay.
Do you see the same two bidders on these or?
We will.
Increases in prices probably?
We are watching that very closely. We do anticipate that the tennis and pickleball complex may come in a little higher. We are working with Alex to try to come up with some solutions if that happens. But on the, the Harmony Place Park, along with the bid instructions for the project, we included several alternates. Several large alternates that we typically don't do. And so if the bid comes in high, as a city, we will have options to take. You know, we can choose to do the entire thing at a higher cost. Or we can say we are not going to take action on alternate one, which could be to remove the tennis court. And that, you know, that gives us about $100,000 flexibility.
And that will be built into the bids?
It is.
They will bid accordingly.
Yeah, and so it's just a cautionary thing that allows us to have choices that are tied in by the contract. If we were to do this after the contract was awarded, we typically don't get that good of a deal. But because it's part of the bid, we can negotiate on good numbers.
All right. Anything else?
It's been a while coming, and it's good to see things come to fruition.
Yep, we are certainly grateful for your faith in us and allowing us to put these out to bid. So, thank you.
Thank you very much. Okay, we'll continue on with our agenda items here. We've got two more items listed. I know one would probably want a lot of conversation on by one of the council members here, but I think if we could, we'll go ahead and go on to item number four, the bid award for Parkway. And Steve Jackson is going to present that.
Thank you, Mayor, Council, for letting me attend tonight. Just wanted to give a brief summary of the bid award that we're proposing tonight for the Leighton Parkway 2700 West project that we've been working on for quite some time now. Part of the project is to work with UDOT to connect the West Davis Corridor interchange at 2700 West to Leighton Parkway and 2700 West. So we put the bid out recently, received the bids back. We had six bidders on the project with Leon Polson Construction being the low bid at $6,360,815. Just a brief summary of the project. The roadway is approximately one mile in length from 2200 West to 2700 West is approximately half a mile, and then from 2700 West, Leighton Parkway, all the way to Gentile is another half a mile. So quite an extensive project for the city. The right-of-way on Leighton Parkway will be 84 feet in width. Right now, it's proposed that we're building a half-width road in that section on the north side of that half-width. The 2700 West right-of-way will be 105 feet in width, and we're proposing the full-width construction on that. In addition to the one mile of roadway, there's about five and a half miles of utilities that need to go in, ranging from sewer water, storm drain, anywhere from 8-inch to 36-inch piping, a box culvert there for the sugar factory drain, and then also relocation of the open space and detention pond that's out there that the road is going to cut through to the other side of the road here. If you can see the mouse there, the detention basin on the west side or southwest side of Leighton Parkway will become relocated over here. So Mr. Crane's team has been working feverishly to get us access to the property. We're stuck with, just like Mr. Price talked about, the pricing and the work that's going on, we're struggling to get the appraisals back on the property. So we do have an access agreement with the Church of Jesus Christ of Latter-day Saints to get in here and start work on the irrigation that needs to happen in order for the farm to continue functioning. The contractor anticipates if this project is awarded, like we hope it will be, that they will start as soon as possible within a very short period of time to try and get that irrigation taken care of before the April irrigation season begins. So with that, I don't know if there's any questions. I guess one other statistic for you is it's just over 17 acres of land that we need to acquire in order for this right-of-way to be built. We've been working with West Davis Corridor, UDOT team, Farmington Bay Constructors is the project team that is working on that, had a meeting today with the Utilities Group on their project to coordinate, but they anticipate the design of West Davis to be mostly complete by the end of August. And so they are moving full steam ahead with that project, and we have a commitment to meet them there with our road as well. And so that's why the project is proposed when it is and moving forward. In addition, the Davis County COG awarded Leighton City $6 million to help build 2700 West, and so $3 million of that is available this year funding, and then next year's funding will be another three to help extend it to the north. So can I answer any questions that you guys might have?
So I just have a couple in the resolution that talks about, and I don't know if this is the same thing that Zach brought up in the other one, but the agreement shall include such other provisions as are deemed necessary to accomplish the purpose of the city entering into this agreement for this project. So what does that mean?
Basically, anything that we need to do to take care of the project, you're authorizing the city manager to enter into those agreements. So we have a standard agreement document that we provide to the contractors when they bid on it. But occasionally, there may be some items that come up in the construction that Alex will need to administer that we authorize that to happen, especially on a project this large, there are occasions for that.
And then in part of the bid, under the street construction on Schedule A, it talks about the furnishing installing five-foot-tall farm fence or field fence and six-foot-tall chain-link fence. Is there going to be a continuation of the concrete wall down Leighton Parkway?
At this time, the proposal is not to extend the wall because this is considered the business district area that we're looking to do, and so we don't want to negatively impact the potential for businesses to relocate or to locate into this area. That will be a decision that we'll make as development occurs and not at this time. Right now, these are active farms, and to install that wall would not be as prudent as we think it would be at future dates, once we know what kind of development would occur in here.
Okay, so I understand the, so the field fencing is obviously probably against existing agriculture?
Yeah, it's just temporary fencing for the church farms to just keep people from trespassing or causing nuisances.
Is that on both sides?
We're working with the church to determine which side they want it on. Right now, I think they've only asked for it on that south side of Leighton Parkway, but we'll certainly be able to accommodate where they think they need it and where they don't. There will be sidewalk on that north side for people to kind of know where they should be.
What about 2700?
There is a proposed field fencing there. Again, the church is determining their operations and where they do and don't want that to be, but where that's a full-width road, it'll have sidewalk on one side and a trail on the east side. So we anticipate that, you know, pedestrians typically stay where they're supposed to. Most of the time, it's people driving off the side of the half-width roads that they're concerned with, so that's why-
Long-term down the road, there's no plan for that concrete fence there?
Not right now on 2700, no. Only on Leighton Parkway if there's a change in potential development there, but we haven't discussed it where it's proposed to be a business park.
And why the decision to go half-width on Parkway and full-width on 2700?
So originally, we were only proposing a 2700 half-width, but with the Davis County COG money that we received, we were able to expand it to the full width. And then based on the traffic patterns that UDOT is projecting for the West Davis Corridor, we feel it prudent to build it now while the funding is available from Davis County.
So Steve, the land, or the Parkway just north of 2200 is still a single lane on the farthest west part of that section. Will that not then develop into full width until the other side of 2200, or when will that widen out?
You're talking east of 2200?
Yeah.
That portion will widen out with the development that's occurring right there, that subdivision, that's one of the phases that's in process of approval right now.
Okay.
So half-width on the Parkway now, who will be responsible then to build out the rest of that?
As the development occurs, the development along that road will be responsible to finish that with as it occurs on that south side. And then we propose that development along this whole Parkway will probably have some payback agreements for the utilities that are being installed in advance of development.
So you fall within the lines of the extractions that we were just educated
And start, you said it'll start maybe with the irrigation stuff soon before season starts. When will actual construction probably begin?
We're working to get additional access agreements to do that work, but as soon as they can get access to the properties, they will start, they want to be finished. We want them to be finished by the end of October. So we anticipate this will move pretty quickly with the amount of work that's out here for these contractors.
And is there any timeframe from UDOT and Farmington Bay to do their portion there at 2700?
We're hearing at the earliest they would be in here at the late, late end of the year, probably in that fourth quarter. If anything, they're working on the south end right now to use that as more of a haul route, but then they also have some structure work that they need to do. So we potentially could see them working at 2700 with some of the structure embankment fill that needs to happen a little bit before you actually see a lot of the roadway construction itself.
So Steve, 2700 then will be built full width at city cost. The developers will not have to pay back on that, or will they?
No, we propose to look at that and establish paybacks based on the development requirements that any developer would normally have to pay for those roads. We don't believe we'll be able to recoup the Davis County COG money because it's a different form of funding source, but there will be a payback for utilities and other roadway work that should have been a developer cost.
Okay, and then being a farmer and an irrigator, and knowing the neighbors that are there are irrigators as well, basically, it's the first of April to have the irrigation structures complete, and we're already 4th of March.
Yeah.
And the permissions are not given on a lot of it yet, from my understanding, from my neighbors, to do those.
Yeah, like I mentioned, Mr. Crane's team is working to get those access agreements. If we don't receive those access agreements, the Church of Jesus Christ property is large enough that there's quite a bit of work there. The contract does stipulate that they have to maintain all of the irrigation throughout the season. So if there's some kind of an impact, they would have to temporarily do something, it would have to work around the farming schedules that we have for the properties.
Well, even on that one, I spoke yesterday with the church people, and they told me that they haven't even decided what irrigation stuff needs to be done.
I don't need to get into maybe an argument with you, but we've met with the church multiple times, and we've met with the people farming the ground, and they have approved the plans that we've provided to them. So I don't know who you're speaking with, but we can certainly talk after the meeting if there's concerns.
Well, I spoke with both John Green, the operator of the farm, and the PRI rep, and he mentioned that, for instance, there's going to be gated pipe that's going to have to be supplied and other things like that, which hasn't even been decided yet. So from an irrigator's point of view, three weeks, if everything was set in stone and good to go tomorrow, I would still worry about it being done in that time period.
Yeah, we're worried that we're going to be up against a pretty hard deadline, but to say that it hasn't been decided yet, we have a signed document from the church saying, go ahead and do what you planned on your irrigation, and there's the agreement with the irrigation plan. So I don't know why they would indicate that they haven't decided on it. I think there's maybe some latitude to decide where some of those things go exactly, but there is a solid plan for the irrigation to be taken care of before the irrigation season begins.
How long do you anticipate these improvements taken first?
The entire project?
No, what we're just talking about here, as far as the concerns with obviously the farmers there on this-
Again, we would love to see it done by April 1st, but typically, April 15th is the drop-dead deadline for having the water come down the pipes. And so we need to make sure that we're focused only on the irrigation until it's all situated and taken care of for the crops that are to get planted.
Okay, so I'm just questioning this now that I'm kind of engaging here. I'm thinking, okay, I know that the water goes in the pipes mid-April, and then usually by October, mid-October, they're also, the water's turned off. And when a conservative year like this, maybe turned off sooner, would it be an issue if we delayed that portion of it until fall, knowing that the state really isn't going to start, or I mean, if they're not going to be ready until the last quarter?
No, if we don't do the irrigation, then the rest of the project can't begin. There's all the laterals, utilities that need to go in, and the irrigation is the first project that has to get taken care of to make the rest of the functionality of the farm work. So if you don't do the irrigation first, then you have to delay the entire project for a year to make that happen, so.
So you're planning on, once you get the water in, then you're planning on throughout the summer then doing the rest of the utilities?
Yeah, the irrigation needs to be-
So the impact will be there all season long?
Yeah, the impact will be there.
As far as the growing season?
Yeah, absolutely. The impact will be there all season, but the irrigation needs to be rerouted and taken care of so that the farms and as much of the farm that is not being impacted can still be farmed. And like I say, we've met with the church multiple times to ensure that the different fields and which direction they, you know, irrigate from are taken care of so that we can ensure a proper functioning system for them.
So what about down 2700 irrigation structures? Because it's not simply the church there. There's water that comes down the jungle ditch all the time that's used by those farmers.
Yeah, that's all taken into consideration in these plans, and we have to coordinate that. I don't anticipate that 27 will be started or completed, the irrigation completely on that one, and so we're going to have to work with them to make sure that whatever we do there is not going to impact the irrigation operations of those facilities. But the jungle ditch or the sugar factory, Jane, as you mentioned, is proposed to be piped all the way from Leighton Parkway to the north. And so as we, typically, they work from the low end to the top end, and so we anticipate that as they work north, they'll build those irrigation structures that are needed and temporarily, you know, provide that water a different method or however they need to do it. So we anticipate a lot of coordination with the home, or with the property owners to make sure that we're not impacting the farms. But unfortunately, that's what, you know, has to happen in order to make the project work sometimes.
I understand that, but I'm very concerned about starting at this late in the spring and a deadline of a water company that's close, because most of us that farm down there have had experiences with promises from construction companies in the past that just, no matter what we say here, they don't come to be. So let's say somebody needs that irrigation and it's not there and their crop's suffered, who would be responsible?
The city or the contractor would have to make that right. And in the past, we've had to buy an entire crop of whatever they were growing if there was some kind of an impact like that. That's what Mr. Crane's team is here for, is to make sure that there's not an issue with that. You know, if there was a problem, we obviously hope that there isn't, and we don't want there to be, and we're going to do everything we can to not have it be an issue. But again, the intent is not to damage anybody through any kind of monetary means that way.
Should we get in that situation? That'd be kind of interesting to see how you put a value on it, because I mean, it's easy to calculate your seed going in the ground, but then the price of your harvest at the end, I mean, that's subject to an opinion.
Well, Gary could speak to all of that, but he's, that's not his first trip around the block with this kind of stuff, so I'm sure, you know, there's a way to calculate that and make sure that we're not creating problems, so.
Yeah, so we've done that before. You might remember, as we were doing Gentile, there was a crop, we had to put a pipe across Leighton's property, Mayor Leighton. I don't know if you remember that?
I do.
So it actually cost us the entire crop, and so we know how to evaluate that. There is a system for evaluation of that, and we will certainly use that system, a credible system and the system that is accepted in the industry to make those valuations if they're needed. They may not be needed at all, but we're prepared either way. So I think some of you might have been here when that happened, I don't know.
Counsel, does anybody else have questions?
Counsel, does anybody else have questions?
I have more, but I can wait till the other meeting.
I have some questions. I just didn't know what a jungle ditch was. The funding for this, I'm assuming we've been saving up our pennies like we talk about for the last, how many years?
Yeah, there's some existing funding that has been budgeted already, and then there's some additional funding that is being requested in the upcoming budget year to finalize the project, so.
You mentioned COG, Davis County COG money. Where is that coming from?
So there's, and again, Gary can explain all the background, but they call it the third-quarter sales tax for transportation, and Davis County has been, I guess, saving some of that money, and they finally released those project requests. And so we put in a project request and asked for assistance there. So it's transportation funding money that Davis County is using to help build some of these regionally significant projects, and we're really grateful for it. It's a huge boost to this project to be able to build this and do it in the timeline that we can make it happen, so.
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
So maybe I missed it, when was the anticipated start date if this is awarded?
The contractor has indicated that they want to start as soon as possible. So basically, if it's awarded tonight, we would get the paperwork taken care of, and within, they're anticipating a week, they want to be trying to get down on the ground there to get this thing moving. So I imagine they're probably already securing the pipe materials and other things they need and game planning. They're very aware of the need to get this irrigation taken care of as soon as possible. And Leon Poulsen Construction is primarily a pipe contractor, so they are, I guess that would be their forte, if you would, if you will, that they're not an earthwork contractor that lays pipe on the side. They do extensive pipe work, so quality-wise, they're one of the best we have.
And you've done work with them in the past.
Yeah, they've done pretty extensive work in the city as a general contractor and also as subcontractors.
Okay.
Okay, thank you.
All right, thanks for that presentation. Okay, we got one more item here on our agenda. We'll have a discussion by Mr. Tim Watkins regarding our landscape ordinance.
Sorry, let me get this cleaned up for you.
Yeah, we haven't seen Tim for a long time. Welcome back, Tim.
All right, it's good to see you again. Let's get this open, and I'll be somewhat abbreviated in reviewing this presentation that some of you were able to listen in on at the last Planning Commission meeting. And this reflects some of the background research that has been done. We've had an intern, Colin G., with us over the summer and fall months and concluded in December. And we've been having conversations with engineering and department and planning department to explore what our general plan recommends, which is encouraging water-wise landscaping and efficient use of land to help conserve limited water resources. And so we're looking at a comprehensive rewrite of our landscape and fencing chapter. Target is this spring for adoption. And just an overview of the perspective, the importance of conservation, this graph is actually provided by the Jordan Valley Conservancy District and similar projections for the Weaver Basin Water Conservancy, but basically shows that without conservation, our current water demand in the green would grow by 2060 to the red. But with conservation measures in place, we could consume much less water and have to develop and bring much less water, find additional and deliver much less water resources to our area. And so how is this done? There are model zoning ordinances that are promoted by Weaver Basin and Jordan Valley Water Conservancy Districts and tools and various educational resources, as well as audits and so forth, that promote landscaping in zones. These are some of the initiatives and programs and partnerships. One is called the Local Scapes, and they promote, not a mandate necessarily, but if folks are looking to save water in their landscaping, they come out and provide a water audit and then provide some of these landscaping design concepts and resources to educate on how to plant by zones, thus localizing the water supply to the plant zone and do less of the uniform application that you see on the right and more of the water conservation approach. And note that the difference in landscape, or excuse me, the irrigation demand is very substantial. Also provide resources and design ideas for plant materials and planting techniques and park strips, where we see quite a bit of water waste throughout our state, and then recommended plant materials, native plants as well as drought-tolerant plants, and how those could be applied in yards and garden areas. And here's some actual photos of these types of local scape or planting by zones applied to some different residences. So the research in looking around the state of Utah really didn't find too many water conservation promoting ordinances in city ordinances. But we did look at South Jordan, and so our review of ordinances expanded beyond the state of Utah and looked at other semi-arid, if not arid, regions that have similar or less water rainfall, annual rainfall than does Layton. And so I'll just kind of look briefly at these cities and then a quick comparison. And some of what we've seen in the comparison of not just these cities, but also the model ordinances that the water districts provide, is a prohibition on water wasting, restricting watering times, and then detailing potential penalties and citations for wasting water. And that's South Jordan. These are just some of the images of South Jordan, and probably don't have time to get into some of the details of what we're seeing. But one item to note is that Daybreak is in this community, and that's a community that supports cluster development and some reduced side yards and front yards that helps to reduce the amount of water that's applied to a lot, and then they tend to share more of the common open space areas. The city of Arvada, Colorado, again, defines and enforces against wasting of water. They actually provide an incentive program that encourages participation in water-wise landscaping and conversion of the existing traditional landscaping. They are also very focused on tree preservation and tree replacement. I'll just point out, the image in the upper right is a community, a new development that negotiated water rates based on some water-wise landscaping and the planting or the street-side park strips. It looks somewhat sparse, but keeping in mind that this is brand-new landscaping, and closer look at the photo showed you can still see the little tags on the plant. So given some time, those will fill out more and provide more greenery, but much less water demand compared to a traditional lawn scape in the park strip. Reno, Nevada, they again encourage water conservation and have quite an extensive regulatory framework to encourage and require water-wise landscaping. A turf coverage restriction of maximum of 50% applies to commercial and multifamily. It does not apply to the single family. And again, they restrict and enforce on water wasting. Here's some examples of landscaping in Reno. You see quite a bit of the reduced lawn area, if not complete elimination of lawn along some of the street projects. This is actually the Reno Temple and some landscaping around the parking areas and between the street and the grounds there, and you do tend to see more of the lawn in the residential areas. In Sacramento, California, they have actually a gray water recycle program, and again, detail the penalties and fees associated with code violations. Some examples in the Sacramento area. And so just a couple of comments related to a comparison. I have just some tables here comparing the ordinances. And here, for example, you see that all, both the model and the city ordinances focus on defining and stating what the infractions for wasting water and the applicable fees and citations associated with those. So we'll kind of skip over that and get more to the design and the maintenance. You note here on the second line that there is a smart irrigation controls, requiring that the irrigation installation adapts to the moisture levels in the soil and the weather conditions. And soil scarifying goes across all of these examples, and that's just turning over the soil, which is particularly important after compaction during construction, and increases the infiltration for waters and nutrients. Turf grass is also restricted on slopes steeper than 25%, and some restrict turf grass in certain park strips or other areas. And then this last comparative table, the model ordinance promotes a calculation for total maximum water use. And that's this top row, and it looks like Sacramento and South Jordan actually provide calculators and formulas for measuring the maximum amount of water to apply to a project, and then projects are held to that amount. And again, another total turf area restriction applies in Reno and Sacramento, but for multifamily and commercial. And then most popular, you see each ordinance requires or encourages water conserving plants and trees that are referenced in the ordinances. And then the one, city of Arvada, has the incentive for commercial, multifamily, and single-family residential conversion to water-wise landscaping. So with that brief summary, we're working to apply and draft options for Layton City's landscape ordinance, and this is intended to decrease the water demand, yet still providing for sustainable and aesthetically pleasing landscapes in homes and businesses. And there are opportunities for water-wise landscaping and irrigation to provide the incentives and the educational resources. Those could include providing access to district initiatives and education, the examples of waterwide landscaping and irrigation plans, the water use calculations, and lists of drought-tolerant and native plant lists. So any questions or comments related to this preliminary research?
Counsel? No, you got a good?
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you, and I'm sure we'll have a lot of discussion as we go forward on this, so thanks for doing that research. That brings our work meeting to an end. As far as our agenda items, we do have about three minutes. If you guys want to take a quick break, you're welcome to, and then let's reconvene at 7:00. Thank you.